My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, laws of 1975 of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the South River Board of Education was provided in the following manner. On March 31st, 2022, the notice was delivered to the office of the borough clerk's of the borough clerk and posted in the Board of Education Administrative Office. On March 31st, 2022, and April 22nd, 2022, the notice was faxed, mailed in the following newspapers, Home News Tribune and Sentinel. On March 31st, 2022, the notice was posted in the South River Borough Clerk's office. Mr. Kokoska will call.
Mr. Bezzaker, Mr. Budson.
Here.
Mrs. Bush.
Here.
Mrs. Byrne.
Here.
Mrs. Love.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Here.
Mr. Younggao.
Here.
Mr. Vannick.
Has been excused.
Mr. Passion.
Has been excused as well. Sorry. Oh, she'll be through shortly. Okay. Thank you, Liz. The purpose of this meeting is to present the 2022-2023 school year budget. But before we get to that, I'm supposed to open to reception of visitors. But seeing none, I'm going to allow Ms. Zercher to go right into our presentation.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Bush. So it's really that time of year that we all look forward to as we close out this school year and start the planning for our upcoming school year. And that's what this budget really reflects, what we will be able to put in place for our students, our staff, our facilities for the upcoming 22-23 school year. So let's talk about the budget process. How do we come to develop this budget? Well, we first looked at our district goals and objectives. In this case, and for this year, we've looked at really what happened throughout the pandemic and what impact that had and what type of recovery we need. And that played a role in this year's budget as well. We also looked at what's required, what are the mandated curriculum requirements that we know we have to implement and put forth for our students, including the Every Student Succeeds Act. During the budget process, we hold several stakeholder meetings. And we hold these meetings with staff, with district administration, with our Board of Education Finance Committee, and as well a discussion with the full board. And how this pretty much works is each department lead and administrator holds a meeting within their their school or department, really starts to talk about what the needs of the school and the students are, conducts a thorough needs assessment, and then asks for those stakeholders to make some recommendations as to what should be prioritized and included in our budget. Then each department lead meets with our business administrator and myself. We review all of that, and we really review that against our own district-wide data. And then from there, we begin to develop the budget. Once we get to that point, we meet with the Board's Finance Committee. And at this time, we represent what all of the stakeholders and what all of the interest groups have proposed should be included into the budget. And once we meet with the Finance Committee, who reviews each, and I really have to give them a lot of credit. They review each line very thoroughly and carefully. They ask questions, they become very engaged and involved in exactly what we're including in the budget, what might remain the same from the previous year, what might the additions be, what changes are occurring that are budget-driven. And then after we go through that process, we, the budget finance, the Board's Finance Committee does really review the process that they've just been through with the full board as well. From that point on, we send our proposed budget to the county superintendent's office for review at that level as well. And so how are we fiscally responsible when it comes to the budget? We try to take all of the opportunities that we can to to maintain that budget responsibility. So, for example, we look at what our current contract obligations are and what our upcoming contract obligations will be. We make sure that we are aligned with the standards and have the curriculum, resources, instructional materials that we need in order to meet those standards. We look for any opportunities with cooperative groups and and resources that we can take advantage of so that we can get the resources that we need at the best and most competitive rate and cost. Some of those money-saving efforts is really to work with the Middlesex County Cooperative Pricing System. They really provide us rates for supplies, maintenance, equipment, really opportunities for us to be able to get access to these things at a much more cost-effective manner. We explore other revenue sources. Many times, we partner with different agencies and with different vendors who can provide us different supplies and resources. Just one very simple example of this that I can think of is some of the professional development that we provide in the summer for our teachers. We open up that opportunity to surrounding districts, and we also offer our facility as a hosting site. And in return, we receive materials and professional development at no cost for our own staff. So that's just one simple example of how something like that works. We also work with the Ed Services Commission, and and we really, really do our best to make sure we are on top of every grant opportunity that comes our way, that we submit those grant applications completely in a timely fashion and in a manner that that helps us ensure that we will be recipient and awarded those those grants. So for the upcoming school year, this budget that we are proposing and that we are presenting tonight will maintain our schools fully staffed with our quality personnel. We are maintaining all of our current staff, if not adding, and we'll go into that a little bit more more in detail. We are really trying to look at how we can minimize and reduce class sizes. We are aware that this is an issue, especially at our primary school, some of our elementary grades. We are really struggling with space limitations in this regard. So not necessarily with the hiring of staff, but really more space limitations. Instructional resources have been updated and aligned to the standards, and we're also able to maintain all of our current instructional programs. So in that regard, there are no cuts from this year in this upcoming budget. Some additional programs and resources that we're looking to add to enhance our current program. We're looking at technology and specifically classroom equipment. We've spent the last two years really focused on devices and our one-to-one initiative from grade K all the way to 12. But now we're really taking a look at how we can modernize some of our classroom equipment and resources and technology. We are going to look at additional devices because every time you do engage in a one-to-one, you have to really make account for devices that need to be updated, replaced, repaired, et cetera. We're going to upgrade desktops here in this in this room you're sitting in because the existing computers that are here will not necessarily support the new course that we're looking to teach at the high school, which is virtual reality. So we're looking to upgrade these computers in order to align with that course. And just as an example of a new program we're providing, the virtual reality course has already been introduced as a as a possible elective to our students for next year. And we have over 100 kids who are interested in that course. So we will see how we accommodate that, but we're excited that the kids are excited about something about new and upcoming. We have a new social studies program coming our way. This year, we implemented a new MAP program. We're looking to replace our social studies program for next year. The year prior to that, we had replaced our language arts program as well. So we're keeping current one content area at a time to make sure that we maintain a cycle of updating our instructional materials. We're also expanding our mental health services with Effective School Solutions. We are in year three of a partnership with them. So this budget will enable the district to provide some some new and improved things as well. A new scoreboard at Denny Stadium. We heard throughout the fall for sure that we would do for a new scoreboard. The existing one is unfortunately aged and has parts that cannot be replaced. So the whole scoreboard itself is due for replacement. We're looking at two district vans. Transportation is an ongoing conversation. These vans are for student transportation. We're looking to potentially use the van for some of our special education trips that happen on an ongoing basis in our self-contained classes, as well as any other just identifiable needs as they come up that we could benefit from using our own district transportation in that regard. We're looking to upgrade the student furniture at the elementary, middle, and high school. We started doing this upgrade probably two years ago, and we started to put in place at the middle school the write-on whiteboard desks. They're movable, kids can move them and work in groups. They can put them apart and work independently, and they can write with whiteboard markers right on the desks. And the teachers can come around and see exactly what the students are taking notes of. And everybody seems to really have positive things to say about that concept. And so we're looking to continue those upgrades. We're going to upgrade the high school auditorium acoustics and sound system. We've tried to hold board meetings in there before and have had a difficult time with the sound system and acoustics in there. And it's the same for students when they want to have activity in there. So we're due really to correct that issue, and we're able to do so in this upcoming budget. We have several new hires to talk about. So as I said previously, we are maintaining all of our current staff, but we're also going to be adding some new staff members. We're looking at two teachers. They are going to be housed in the primary school temporary units that we are adding and that were reflected on on the agenda for you to take action on. We're looking for one district paraprofessional who will be assigned to this area as well to help the students come back and forth and to meet their needs as they'll be just in a different location than the main building. We're looking for a supervisor of curriculum and instruction. This is really focused on helping our students with recovery of instruction. We had a data presentation from Dr. Trubusano some time ago where he displayed some of our current student academic data. And we do have some concerns that we have a little bit of catch-up to do since the pandemic. And this individual will be responsible for putting in a lot of the remediation programs and activities for that academic loss that we need to recover. We have four registered behavior technicians that we're looking to hire. These are specific for our special needs classes. A secretary for the facilities department. We are looking to engage in a lot of new facility upgrades and projects. And so we'll definitely need somebody who will help us maintain those purchase orders, contracts, stay on top of the construction schedules, et cetera. So that's in the budget for the upcoming year. We are recommending that our athletic trainer move from part-time to full-time. This has been something we've discussed before. We're seeing this as a need now because we've added several new teams in the past few years, and we see this as a benefit for the district. We're adding an additional unarmed security staff member at the high school. We have found that the current unarmed security in conjunction with our armed security guard just really provide good oversight and support for our students and staff. Four additional lunch aids and two van drivers to go with those two vans. So in terms of safety and security, $108,000 are allocated to the four full-time Class III officers. We share the cost of these officers with the borough in in a shared program with them that we are thankful to continue that partnership with, and the additional unarmed security member that I just mentioned to you as well. In maintenance and capital projects, we're looking at the replacement of the outside steps at the sign entrance of the high school where you go into the gymnasium or the or the auditorium side. We're looking to replace those steps. They're really in in need of replacement. We're looking at a sidewalk and lane widening at the elementary and middle school. We are in discussions on this project to make sure that this is a viable opportunity for us. But we're looking to see how we can make that drive it just a a more applicable and and just more functioning, well-functioning area for our parents during drop-off and pickup. And then we're looking to develop some outdoor classroom spaces. This was something that we learned from the pandemic, that our students like to learn outside, our teachers like to take them outside for learning. And if we have some designated spaces for that, we can take advantage of that when what there is in our favor. The next few slides, and I won't read each of these figures because we are fortunate to have so many of them on the list, is a list of our grants and the amounts that we are scheduled to receive for the 22-23 year. We have two pages of these grants, which is a great benefit to the district. In total, our grant funding equals about $10 million, and it's a fantastic supplement to our budget. There really is two pages of those. And with that, I've really covered just how our funds are going to be expended throughout the next school year, what some of our additional programs are, what we're looking forward to for next year, because we are fortunate to be able to do so through this budget. Any questions or comments?
I have some comments. I'm gonna invoke Tony here. If you look, there's $417,030 that has to go to charter schools. And primary one is probably the Hittigler School, which is a thorn in Tony's side. That's money that comes out of our budget. And other than that, this is a great job. If you watched the news within the last two days, you will see that schools is, it slipped my mind. Westfield is laying off 12 teachers and getting rid of other staff. They're doing away with their arts and leisure programs. So for us to be bringing on staff and to putting in new things, it's wonderful. These two pages of grants were because you and the staff went out and found them and brought them into the district, and that's $10 million that is going to be spent wisely. And the financial people that are involved in this, Ken, you and your crew, congratulations again, Sylvia, congratulations on another great budget. We're not laying off staff, we're bringing back our our part-time. Trainer to full-time, which I know she's going to be happy with. And the students will be happy because remember when we had Knock Her Back Down, they filled this room, you know, and had nothing to praise for. So a wonderful job all around on everyone. Congratulations.
With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ken. Ken? Ken? Go for it.
Review the financials.
It's all yours, Mr. Kokoska.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Okay, so there are two components to the budget. There's the revenue side and then expenditure side, no different than everyone's household. So the first slide is the revenue. Basically, what it tries to show you here are the sources of income the district does receive in order for us to maintain the schools, programs, and facilities. The first line, since there's only a few others, we're maybe five minutes on my time. The first line is, in layman's terms, is what we would call a savings account, where we defer to our savings account to help us balance the budget. So that's what it's 2.3 million. The local tax levy is the taxes that are due that the local town provides. State aid is what, I missed, the state of New Jersey provides. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I meant, I'm sorry. Thank you. The Medicare reimbursement is a federal money from the from the government for associated with the special ed program. The miscellaneous income is various sources of income that we receive, whether it be interest in banks and on other sources of minor revenues that we do receive. As you can see, it's only $15,000. And then the last one is the capital reserve account, which is another account, aside from the regular account that the district has, to fund projects, as Mrs. Zercher indicated in the slides of the capital projects and the maintenance projects that will be performed in the 22-23 school year. So then it all adds up to $44.2 million. So now we have all that money. I like to say all that money. So it takes you to the next slide, which is how they're going to spend it. And these are just the various lines, the prominent lines that that make up your budget, salaries, the health benefits. I'll again allude to Mr. Nielsen's comment with the charter schools, special ed services, maintenance, everything that, anything that needs to run a school district. And like everything else, with a budget, it needs to balance. So therefore, your expenditures equal the $44.2 million. The last page is how the $17,493 that I alluded to, as far as the taxes are concerned and how it affects the local residents. The taxes are based on the assessed value of all the homes and businesses in the in the South River. Based on that, the one tax point in the South River would equal to $151,348. In short, in layman's terms, as far as the what it would cost a taxpayer in town for an average assessed home with $291. So therefore, if your home is assessed less than $291, this number will be less. And of course, if the number of your assessed value is higher, then the amount would be greater. But on the average, on the increase of the $17.4 million to a tax for a resident taxpayer, it would be $9.34 on a month, on a monthly, and on a yearly, it would be approximately $112. With that, we go back to questions again, if there are any questions.
Any questions from the board?
No.
Okay. Okay, then I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Love.
Thank you.
Yeah?
As a Finance Committee, we would like to extend our appreciation to Sylvia, the administrators, Ken and his staff for putting everything together and organizing it in such a way. So since we already read the specifics at a previous board meeting, I can go ahead and just say, for finance, we have 4.1 approved 22-23 school budget and is so moved.
Okay, a second?
Nielsen.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. Okay, any questions before we take roll call? Mr. Kokoska?
Mr. Bezzaker.
Yes.
Mr. Budson.
Yes.
Mrs. Bush.
Yes.
Mrs. Byrne.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Nielsen.
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mr. Younggao.
Yes.
Okay, a motion moved. Okay, at this time, we're going to open to reception of visitors. Public may address any concerns or comments that they have before the board. I ask that you come to the microphone and say your name and address, and to keep your comments to a 10-minute limit.
Good afternoon or good evening, Danielle Oswald, 16 Garwich Street. I noticed in the budget presentation that there's going to be a new scoreboard for Denny Stadium. I wonder if the audio system for the field has been addressed?
Not in this budget.
Okay, is there a plan for the future?
There is.
Okay.
All right, that's it. For this.
Thank you. And since that's our entire public session at this time, we are going to move to adjournment of the special meeting, and then we will take a little bit of a break and then come back for our regular meeting. So if I could have a motion?
Nielsen.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sadowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's just kick it. No flags, so we already did that. In compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, laws of 1975 of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the South River Board of Education was provided in the following manner. March 31st, 2022, the notice was delivered to the office of South River Borough Clerk and posted at the Board of Education Administrative Office. On March 31st, 2022, the notice was faxed and mailed to the following newspapers, Home News Tribune and the Sentinel. And on March 31st, 2022, the notice was posted at the South River Borough Clerk's office. Mr. Kokoska, roll call, please.
Mr. Bezzaker. Mr. Budson.
Yes.
Mrs. Bush.
Here.
Mrs. Byrne.
Here.
Mrs. Love.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Here.
Mr. Younggao.
Here.
Mr. Vannick.
Has been excused.
Mr. Passion.
Here.
Okay. With that, we're gonna take a look at the minutes, Mr. Kokoska.
There are no changes from Monday's meeting or additions.
Okay. Anybody with questions about the minutes? I need a motion to approve the minutes then.
Nielsen.
Mr. Nielsen, second by?
Bezzaker.
Mr. Bezzaker. Questions? Then that's all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes. And then, Mr. Kokoska, if you can discuss use of facilities.
Yes, we have several items added from Monday's meeting. We have the South River Parks and Recreation, the South River Planning Board, the South River Middle School PTA, the South River High School, and the South River Primary School.
Okay, so I need a motion?
Nielsen.
And a second?
Bezzaker.
Okay, so Mr. Nielsen and Mr. Bezzaker, any questions on use of facilities this evening? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion moves as well. Okay, Ms. Love, it's all yours with the financial report.
It is resolved that the Board of Education hereby certifies that it is in receipt as a financial report, which indicates that no major account has been over-expended and that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the fiscal year. The Finance Committee recommends that the reports of the Board Secretary and the Treasurer of School Money for February 2022 be approved and isolated.
Okay, do I have a second?
Nielsen.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. And this is an all-in-favor. Any questions? Please forget that. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion moves. Yes, now, Ms. Zercher, your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Bush. So I'd like to begin tonight's report with just really our current conditions. We are continuing our regular programming, which was very great. We are glad to report that we continue towards a path of recovery, reacclamation, from from an atypical school year to a more typical one. Our reported positive COVID cases remain low. We do still receive the reports from the Health Department. Our region continues to be at a yellow moderate rate of transmission. But our students and staff have been really successful and continue to really make the best personal decision regarding masking. And we've been fortunate that that has been effective for us. We continue to have a stock of COVID rapid tests for anybody who needs one. And we're hopeful that we can look forward to finishing the school year in these positive training conditions. So that's great news to report. We have many upcoming facility projects, and I list them here in my report. We have the installation of the two temporary classroom units at the primary school. The main reason for these is to be able to reduce class size but continue to maintain our pre-K program as it's been. We are completely out of space deficiency in all four buildings. We've moved around the grade levels that we could. We've used every space that we could, including turning a faculty room for teachers into a classroom space for students. We have all of our special area teachers out of court because we have no classroom space for art, music, library, et cetera. So we are maximizing every potential space that we have. But our first-grade numbers and our kindergarten numbers are high because of the lack of space. So we have not been able to expand the pre-K program. We have individuals on a waitlist because we are out of space. And in order to be able to maintain the pre-K program as is right now, to continue to provide free full-day pre-K for our three- and four-year-olds, we are installing the two temporary classroom units that will go to either grade K or 1 in order to reduce those class sizes. The units themselves look The units themselves look like beautiful new classrooms. They each have a bathroom in them. They accommodate the full size of a class. And they are good and comfortable spaces for learning. But we are at a point where we see no other choice but the installation of the units without affecting our current programs. We are looking at a high school classroom addition, three new classrooms, and a large space for various learning opportunities. And that is going to be grant funded. That is some of the grant funding allocation that I just discussed in the budget presentation. We're looking at the reconstruction of those steps and additional ramps at the sign entrances of the high school, also mentioned in the budget. The addition of the outdoor learning spaces that you saw included. The addition of a pre-K trike track for tricycles, it's a figure eight road track for little ones to ride their little tricycles. That's being funded with the pre-K budget, with the pre-K grant budget. We're looking at, we, what we just did, the resurfacing and the upgrade of the tennis courts. We are awaiting the painting of the tennis courts, which Mr. Bouchard and Mr. Papolino spent some time deciding on the colors. And we are going within the green and gray scheme. So that will happen at the end of this month? May, at the end of May? Correct, we are still in April, yes. The end of May, after the season is over. We took a look at the conditions of our fields, our JV and our varsity baseball and softball fields. And working with the coaches, we definitely knew that they needed some way of conditioning. And some of that work has taken place. All of that is almost finished. There's just one more thing that needs to be done at the varsity field. We're looking at, we looked at an upgrade and addition of cafeteria and kitchen equipment for the high school. You may have noticed some of that equipment when you walked in. And there's no equipment in the cafeteria and the gymnasium as we use all of these areas for the unit lunch. And then also mentioned in the budget, the lane widening project. So all of these projects mostly funded by different grant opportunities as well as our capital reserve. We have a lot of end-of-year events coming up, so please, please make sure that you are looking at our district website and calendar. We are resuming all of those regular end-of-year activities. There's been a lot of chatter. I know, Julia, you probably know this. There's been a lot of chatter about senior trip prom and all of these great events. I think Mr. South River just took place. A lot of things going on at the end of the year. Our curriculum fair is coming up. That is scheduled for Thursday, May 26, from 9:00 to 7:00 p.m. And that is being hosted along with our district art show. The art show takes place at the middle school and the curriculum fair here at the high school. As in previous years, we will hold performances during the curriculum fair in the auditorium, in the high school auditorium, as well as have displays in the gymnasium and the cafeteria. And also have just an opportunity to talk to a lot of people from the community. SOPD will have a table. The local library will be with us. I believe Middlesex County College is joining us. And our county superintendent will be visiting as well. So it's a very well-intended event, and we hope that you can all join us on that day. And just before this meeting, I presented the budget for the 2223 school year that will be posted on our district website. And I really hope that some of our community members, all of our community members have an opportunity to go visit the presentation and take a look at what's planned and what's in store for the upcoming school year. And so concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Zercher. Very comprehensive. We have a lot of stuff going on over the next several months and into the next year.
We do.
Some, some nice changes for our staff, for our students, and for the community as well. So, so at that point, I need a motion to accept Mrs. Zercher's report.
Nielsen.
Mr. Nielsen, second?
Second.
By Ms. Sadowski. Any questions, comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, please.
In regards to, I didn't get a chance to see the Mr. South River, but I did get a chance to go to the middle school play and the ellipseing contest. The middle schoolers did a fabulous job. There are some really good actors in that group. And some of the dancers that were in the ellipseing category, unbelievable the way they, they, they just controlled that stage. They, I mean, they should, I'm hoping that they can come to the curriculum fair and display their talents because we have some really talented young men, women who were up on that stage for those two minutes. It was nice to see everybody coming back in after this pandemic and getting back in. It was really wonderful. And that's it.
Anybody else? Okay. Then with that, I need a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries? Okay. At this time, I'm going to open the floor to reception of visitors. This is our first session. The public can address agenda items only. I ask that you come to the podium and to state your name and your address. Please keep your comments to a 10-minute limit. So, nothing at this time? Okay. All right, then we're going to move to the consent resolution. Mr. Kokoska?
The South River Board of Education, by means of a consent resolution, adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time, whereas listed resolutions are hereby adopted by said Board of Education in whole as it is same or individually acted upon from the President of the Board 5.2 through 5.4, Athletics and Curriculum 6.1, Building and Grounds 7.1, Finance 8.1 through 8.39, Instruction 9.1 through 9.4, Policy and Legislation Items Level 1 through 11.6, Human Resource 12.1 through 12.22, and Safety and Risk 13.1 and 13.2.
Okay. Motion?
Nielsen.
Mr. Nielsen?
Second.
By Mr. Bezzac. Questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Kokoska, roll call?
Mr. Bezzac?
Yes.
Mr. Budson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrne?
Yes.
Mrs. Lell?
Yes.
Mr. Nielsen?
Yes.
Ms. Sadowski?
Yes.
Ms. Young-Gao?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. At this point in the meeting, we're going to open up to our committee reports. So first up is athletics and extracurricular. Mr. Budson?
It was like one item, the application for club boys and girls bowling team, bowling. The South River Board of Education and the South River and East Brunswick vocational technical school. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Bezzac? Oh, Mr. Budson? Yes?
I have no questions, Bud. If you ever, your new business, I asked if I could speak in regards to Diane Fulham Blaska. Rider dedicates bullpen to softball Hall of Famer. The name recognizes, the naming recognizes a planned gift from Diane Fulham Blaska, class of '89, that will support the women's softball team. Just a couple of quick little paragraphs. In recognition of the planned gift from Broncos softball standout Diane Fulham Blaska, class of '89, Rider University held a ceremony on April 2nd to form the women's team's bullpen in honor. The planned gift is a contribution to a charitable organization usually through a will or request. This type of gift may be unrestricted, which would allow Rider to direct support to an area of greatest need, or it can be designated for a specific person. Miss Fulham Blaska's specific request will, when realized, will support the women's softball team. She, she quoted as saying, "Rider is in my will because it provided me with a full athletic scholarship, my hands-on education, and a warm, encouraging environment to increase my understanding of the world and my place in it." Miss Fulham Blaska is the Director of Institutional Giving at Hackensack Memorial Health Foundation. She is, she led Rider University to four consecutive East Coast Conference Championships. As a sophomore, she was the ECC Player of the Year and ECC Championship tournament MVP. She graduated with the Rider records for wins and strikeouts in season. In 2011, she was inducted into the university's Athletic Hall of Fame. And she was also a member here. She graduated from South River High School in 1985. She was the pitcher for state championship teams. She had numerous amounts of no hitters. And I believe she may have even pitched a perfect game. But don't quote me on the perfect game. Like I said, at Monday night's meeting, we always talk about, it always seems that our, our men, the football heroes of town are always recognized. And I've been a friend with Diane and her family for my entire life. So I just wanted to get this out here to let her know that we support her and we thank her for, and we congratulate her once she's gone. And that'll be it.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, Buildings and Grounds. Again, Mr. Nielsen, it's all yours.
I have one item. You can go back to that screen. 7.1, addition, approved, submit, initial application for multiple temporary instructional spaces, primary school 2022-2023 school year. And with Mr. Blaj's monthly report, you see the day-to-day operation listed there in his bullet points. And with April almost over, we find ourselves right in the middle of our spring sports season. But with the weather lagging, you would swear we were getting into the fall. Our maintenance staff has been working hard, raking, lining, and grooming fields for play. They have created a new fence separating the varsity from junior varsity softball fields. Reopened and repaired the stadium bathrooms from the winter, and have repaired and painted dugouts. During our recent break, we were able to tackle a few projects. Over 100 boxes of files were shredded, and we moved from storage. That water testing was performed in all the schools, and over 60 desks were assembled at the high school. New doors were installed in the board office. Air filters were replaced, and new blow-in motors rooms were installed in high school. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our maintenance staff for their hard work and long hours during the past month. And as always, co-ramps, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Nielsen and his committee? Seeing none, I'm going to have Ms. Lell do the Finance Committee report.
Thank you. The first 37 items were read aloud at Monday's evening. If anybody is interested in taking a peek at them, they discuss a lot of the information where we start preparing for next school year, for the 2223 school year. There's a lot of interesting statements in terms of resources that we have, projects that are coming forward. And the only two new items for this evening are 8.38, addition, approved, submit, except, American Rescue Plan homeless children and youth grant application, and 8.39, addition, approved, contract, French and Perro Associates Engineering Services Elementary School Playground Renovation, Bus Drop Off, and Road Realignment Project. That is all I have.
Okay. I do have a question, just about 817.
817 was just a revised backup.
So is, is that something we're discussing in close later? Yes, it is. It is, that's what I thought. So we'll, we'll discuss that later. And yes, I did see the changes in that. Nice, thank you. Okay. Any questions for Ms. Lell and Finance? Okay, then I'm going to do the instruction report at this time. We have four items on the agenda. 9.1 had a revision. There was an addition to the PD chart. Nothing else changed as far as the resolutions in that regard. I would like to give an update on Dr. Travasano's report that he gives us each month. Couple things in particular. First, Ms. Zercher already made reference to it in her budget presentation, but the building administrators and Dr. Travasano are continuing to analyze data on student performance. They've been meeting pretty regularly to review this data. They are set to continue for the rest of this school year and into next year, reviewing that data. And it sounds as though the supervisor of curriculum instruction is going to be integral at this point in planning some programming there. In addition, we are doing our summer programs, and we have three different things going on this summer. So we have remedial instructions for students who need to bridge the gap due to the pandemic. We have an accelerated program for students who would like to continue to explore and to develop at an accelerated grade. In addition, we have a credit recovery program, so our high school seniors can graduate with their class. And more importantly, we just started the CUSAC process. So, Ms. Searcher, if you'd like to just talk a little bit about that?
Sure. We had our CUSAC evaluation this week on Tuesday. We were reviewed in several areas, including governance, finance, programming, and facilities. And the meetings went well. We met with representatives from the county, and we reviewed all of the backup information that we have to support the mandates in each of those areas, the requirements in each of those areas. So for each indicator, we had to provide evidence that shows that we met that indicator and that we are compliant in that indicator. And we are awaiting the final report and our CUSAC score, which I will share with the board and the public at an upcoming meeting once we receive it.
Any idea on how long that takes?
I don't.
Remember how long it takes? It's been a while.
I predict it'll be before the end of the school year.
Okay. Any questions on instruction? Great. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to negotiations. Anything for us this evening?
There's open, there's meetings set for May 4th and the 24th.
Yes, that is correct. Okay, perfect. Okay, Policy and Legislation, Ms. Byrne?
There are no changes from Monday.
Okay, perfect. Anybody with any questions? Mr. Bazak, Human Resources?
I have one revision and three additions since Monday evening. Item 12.9 was revised and one additional lunch aid. And then item 12.20, Addition, Approve, Temporary High School Collector of Revenue, Daniel Stepora, 2021, 2022 School Year. Item 12.21, Addition, Approve, Resignation, Jeffrey Cook, High School Art Teacher. And item 12.22, Addition, Approve, Attention of Disability, Sick Family Leave, Nicole Farlow, Guidance Counselor, 2021, 2022 School Year.
Any questions from Mr. Bazak? Seeing none, that will go to Safety and Risk Management, Ms. Sadowski.
There's no additional items since Monday night.
Questions or comments? School Community Relations, Ms. Young, go ahead.
I'm going to read the Middle School Students of the Month for March. Grade six, ELA, Isabella Luce. Math, Allison Nolaska Silva. Science, Kathleen Rodriguez and Andy Herrers. Social Studies, Gabriel Imroni. ESL, Yasmin Lopez de Silva. PE, Tatiana Medina. Cycle, David Godoy. And in grade seven, ELA, Noah Lopez. Math, Melissa Mistery. Science, Hayden Sullivan and Arlie Pena. Social Studies, Terrell Borum. PE, Jaden Jekyll. Cycle, Kyra Orozco Lopez. In grade eight, ELA, Jonathan Marak. Math, Cameron Latverse. Science, Daniel Swastin and Randy Aceveda. Social Studies, Brendan Wau. PE, Diana Vidal. And Cycle, Rebecca Mala. That is all.
Any questions? School Board, Borough Council Liaison, Mr. Nielsen?
Nothing new since we discussed on Monday.
Perfect. PTA, Ms. Sadowski, I think you have some things for us this evening.
I do. At the primary school, they just finished up their book fair. I believe the last day is tomorrow. They have a couple of events coming up. They have the Blossom Ball. They also have a STEM assembly on May 9th, which is under the use of facilities. And the elementary school, they held their spring dance in April, and they finished up their spiritware sale. And both of the PTAs are planning events for teacher appreciation and for Fun Day. That's really all I have.
Any questions for PTA? Then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Budson for the public library.
Story walk on Pacers Field as I've been running. Library got their grant to get their HVAC replaced this year. And they're going to get a new roof. They may have to close for a few days, so they can't bear a way to put the dumpster and all the debris coming down, so. And by next month, they'll have the summer program set up. They're working on it now. That's all I have.
That'll be great. Ms. Searcher, will the library summer program be a part of the E-RAM, possibly for parents?
Sure.
Okay, that'll be good. Okay, then Ms. Low. South River Foundation for Educational Excellence?
The foundation met via Zoom. They have the link posted on their website page, so all are welcome to attend. We had a meeting of discussion that related to two student ambassadors regained. They could use three more and an advisor. Their Day of Giving is tomorrow. That is really important for them in terms of continuing to have support. So if you have an opportunity to look at the website or on the Facebook page, all the directions and the details are there to support them on their Day of Giving. And they are planning to have tables set up at the curriculum fair and at the middle school concert that evening at both locations, with a lot of upcoming ideas that they're working on to bring back the financial aspect so that they can continue to support the students and teachers of the district. And that's all I have.
That's great. Okay. School Board Representative, Ms. Passion?
Thank you, I have nothing to share today.
Old business? Anybody with anything old or new for this evening? Yes, Mr. Bazak?
I would like to just congratulate Ms. Searcher for being asked by Monmouth University and NJASA to serve on the Panel for Women's Leadership Conference. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Sylvia.
Thank you.
Anybody with anything else this evening?
I would like to congratulate Ms. Searcher on defending the first part of her doctorate with success.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
That's big. Congratulations.
We're getting there.
It was a Twitter secret.
It was a Twitter secret.
We're getting there, yes.
That's right.
So, when will you do the second part?
Scheduled for the late summer, early fall. And then that, and then I'll have completed the program.
So September, we could call you Dr. Searcher?
Let's hope so.
Okay.
That was just, that was just.
It actually happened. There hasn't been that far.
My fault.
Congratulations, Sylvia.
Thank you.
Our attorneys report. Nothing this evening, okay? Okay. At this point, I'm going to turn it over again to Ms. Low for the payment of the bills.
Thank you. The Finance Committee recommends that all bills presented haven't been certified by the School Business Administrator, Board Secretary be made as listed in ISO move.
Okay, second?
Second.
By Mr. Nielsen. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, at this time, we're going to move to our second reception of visitors. The public may address any conservative comments that they have before the board. Again, please come to the podium and state your name and address, and please keep your comments to a 10-minute limit.
Hi, good evening again. Danielle Oswald, 16, Garbage Street. I'm here on behalf of the South River Foundation for Educational Excellence. I wanted to go over what we're planning on doing to do some public relations efforts to raise awareness for our organization. As Mrs. Low stated, we're going to be at the curriculum fair and the district art show on May 26th. We are planning on walking in the Memorial Day Parade. Our fundraising efforts, we are going to be doing a targeted requests for businesses in the South River area to donate specifically to support the cost of SRP staying a compliant nonprofit. That's basically the cost of us doing business as a nonprofit. And we want to see if local businesses would be able to contribute to help us to for that cost, because it's a sizable cost. You may have heard, our second annual Day of Giving is tomorrow. The donations that we receive tomorrow through Sunday will count towards that Day of Giving total. Last year, we raised $1,600. This year, we have a goal to try to raise $2,500. And we hope that we can do that. Tomorrow morning, there will be a video posted. I know that last year, we did the SRP Week Walk Down Memory Lane. Wanted to mix it up a little bit this year and not have something to do every single day this week leading up to the Day of Giving. So we are doing a video that is highlighting all that we have done. And we've had, we have some special cameos in that video asking for support. We have a South River Hall of Fame honorary person in there, as well as our past Hall of Fame honorees from our dinner dances. So that's very exciting. The scholarship application deadline is May 13th, 2022. That is a Friday, May 13th. Since 2016, 18 seniors have been awarded with $2,800. So we would like to add to that total. And thank you to the future Dr. Searcher about the recommendation for having a student interest meeting. We were able to get two students to apply. Hopefully, we will get the rest, as well as the student advisor. But hey, that's a start. So I'm very happy and grateful for that. And our board seems to be really stepping up and coming up with ideas, and so I'm very grateful for that as well. And for the time being, we are going to keep our meetings virtual. I think it's just a little bit more convenient for everyone to meet that way and still fulfill their family obligations. So that is all I have for now. So thank you, and please remember to donate tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one more thing. Sorry. If anyone is interested in also having a cameo in the video that's going to be tomorrow, please come see me.
Thank you, Danielle. Okay, at this time, that's going to pretty much end our regular meeting. The Board is going to go into executive session at this point to discuss items on personnel and attorney-client privilege. Okay. I need a motion to go into?
Nielsen.
I got a question. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so. Resolve that pursuant to Section 7 and 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, and the following subjects to be discussed at the session of the Board of Education closed to the public will be personnel and attorney-client privilege. It is previously anticipated that the items will be discussed in closed session and can be disclosed to the public when resolved. Now I need my motion.
Nielsen.
Mr. Nielsen?
Second.
Second by Ms. Low. And this will be a roll call. Mr. Kokoska?
Mr. Bazak?
Yes.
Mr. Budson?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Ms. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Nielsen?
Yes.
Ms. Sadowski?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. Bye. Good night.